Not gonna get any better if we don't take this thing. And I thank you very much for bringing your spotlight. Thank you. Spotlight. And, uh, but I want us to do that as a council. And, and if you wanna, I mean, it's, we're the ones to have the vote anyway, so. Um, but I would like us to do that as a council.
Be a real good show of face.
Make a message.
That's a motion.
What I've got here is what you wrote. I also wrote a few things.
Can you send, can you, would you be, would you be so kind as to send that to us? Because it, it needs to be sent.
Absolutely will. Absolutely will. But here's, here's, here's what I'm getting to. I've got employees as well that desire to speak. I've also got employees that have spoken with me and said, will you relay this to council for us? Those employees need to be heard, not just by y'all, but by the city itself. As far as what the employees and the, and, and those that work and make this function. Uh, make the city function, what our feelings are toward our leadership, including y'all. And how much I can brag on each and every one of y'all. To other cities that I go to. That's what my statement talks about. It's not about ridicule. It's not about placing blame. It's about letting tiny little things come in between a lot of times, just a miscommunication. And then have other people that are misinformed. Blow that out of proportion and cause things like that to happen. And, and none of us want that. You don't want that. No, no one wants that.
I've got, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Because we're, we're, we're off, we're, we're way off track.
No, we're not.
With regards to me. Okay? I would like to ask, can we, as a community? I'm asking a legal, I'm least, uh, you, asking, leaning on you for a little bit of advice here. Can we, as a community, meet together and mingle with each other after this meeting?
No.
So, so that we can hear those comments.
With all due respect, I'd like for you to be in an official setting though. I will limit myself, I will limit myself to three minutes and you can cut me off and I will not ask for more. Per, and like I say, this first one is through the chief, it's not me. I also have one of myself, I have a few employees that may like to say something. And I think there's some other employees at the city that would like to speak as well.
Because all, all in all, this, the issue is the city of Windsor. And that's what this, it's what the meeting was about. And, um, councilman Hollowell was wanting to have an answer of why, why you felt that it was necessary to call that meeting during the day. And I asked him for that and you wouldn't give me an answer either, way before it was even come upon us. So. Yes, Shannon?
Are we on six point eight? That's only about the special meeting last, that Saturday? Are we on eight point one? I'm confused.
Well, since.
Because the, I, I think everybody has a valid point and wanna be heard on something, we're discussing something that's not so pointy. It's only about a meeting that never had.
That's what I was trying to say.
Alright, so we're on the wrong agenda.
What I'm saying is.
Six point eight.
Okay.
But a meeting that was.
What, what?
It was called.
The reason I stood up during this one is because I was under the impression that eight point one was a reassessment of six.
Yeah.
Six whatever.
Six eight.
Six eight. And I wouldn't worry that I would be able to speak in.
Can we do that?
In close call.
Can we have public comment on eight point one and then just not go into, and then?
You have to go into.
I think you can have it on six point eight.
I think so too.
I mean, it's already opened up.
It, it's on the same thing, it's, that's what the executive, the special meeting was. So let's, we'll.
You can move eight point one.
We'll move right through, we'll move through the crowd, just as we've done before. Front row, and we'll move from my right to my left. Three minutes, limit three minutes for each caller.
If I make my finished chief Chester's and I yield the floor to the next person, that way they, they have their turn.
So we're combining it with eight point one.
Eight point one is a separate item.
May I make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Once we do this tonight, can it be over?
Yes.
Woo, yeah!
If you guys move on, it will.
I just need the others. Okay. Go, Chris.
Continue, Chris.
So I'll, he sat me down and explained to me why he felt the way was the proper way to handle things. So I'll move on. The underhanded and undertapped stuff began to disappear. People that knew these things began to leave and it became pleasant to go over to City Hall side. Once Russ started moving forward, Craig has helped me with my leadership skills and with the employees that I wanted to grow into leadership. He gave me the direction and still does. One of the leaders he helped me with is reading this statement to you. A constant barrage of negativity from small groups of people, several which are not even in the city limits, wore me, wore me to a point where I was ready to retire. I even lined up another job and accepted it. As I was preparing to give my final notice, Craig asked to speak with me. The things that he said inspired me again to the point that I turned down a good and much easier job. He inspires my staff, he inspires all of them. He inspires the employees to do the city, the job at their city, at the city. Even under less than wonderful circumstances. They are loyal to the city, but any of them will tell you that this is the first time that we've had a true leader. We spoke on his behalf in June and nothing has changed except for the agendas of a few people. Craig Lindholm is not the problem. Please let Craig and the rest of the city staff get back to the job they were hired to do and you can stop this turmoil tonight. Thank you for listening and a gesture of chief of please.
Continue, Chris.
Do you have a comment for yourself?
I do, but I'd like to yield the floor, catch your breath, maybe get a drink, I'll come back in just a second. Thank you.
State your name. Oh. Go faster.
I'm James Lotters, uh, runways owner in the city of Windsor, worked here for eighteen years. I have to, felt Craig has done a good job, a great job for us. Uh, I feel like that we have not moved forward because of all the arguing that has gone on with council. And I feel like too, that one side or the other is against it. And I feel like too, people have tried to corner votes to try to make it go their way. And I believe both parties on that side are both wrong for doing it. I don't think it's right. You're sitting in a seat that the citizens look at you for and just feel that it's wrong. I, as a council member, served as a council member. I know what it takes to be a council member. The things I've seen that's been done here, I've never seen done anywhere else. I've never seen people like that. All the things that we hear on Facebook, newspapers, nobody wants to read the newspaper, none, none of the boys, they read to just see what's going on, but what can you believe out there? You can't believe nothing on Facebook. Why ain't you look at it? And why does somebody take one thing and say it to get spread around? But us as employees don't know nothing. We ain't heard one side of the story or the other side of the story. How can we make the determination? We don't know. We can't. I feel that, uh, being, uh, being honest with each other, trust, it's a big deal. I feel like that, you know, Craig, and I feel Craig has done a good job for us. I thought, he's done better than, especially a lot better than the last one we had. I mean, it was just constant something all the time. And it's, it's been constant here all the time now. You can't, I can't go ask Craig for something because I don't know if he's gonna be here from one day to the next. Y'all wanna go in there and bother him? No. He's got his own problem. He's got his own issue. So how can I go in there and say something to him? It reflects on all of us. So, thank you.
Sir? Ma'am? Sir?
Nah.
We'll, we'll start back over in the second row. Gentlemen in the hat. Mr. Cornyn?
Excuse me?
Do you want to stand up as chief?
I most certainly would.
Where was going?
I'm still the best looking builder here. I'm David Bennet, circle drive, and I'm glad to be here. How are you, mayor? Because I've got a few questions for you. All right? If you're the captain or a manager of a baseball team and they don't get any hits and they don't get any drives, who do they go to to complain? Or who does the ownership go down and talk to? Not the players, but the coach. And that's what you are, you're the coach here. And all the people that have the right to come down and talk to you, here are our citizens, right here in Windsor. You know what, mayor? I want you to start hitting a home run. Thank you.
My comments were inappropriate for this particular lot, I'm gonna repeat myself to the like of it. Now, I am the senator thirty-one twenty-five, from FM twenty-eight sixty-nine, and you're parliamentarian. I've served, uh, under several councils, under several city administrators. It's been for the most part a pleasure. I have nothing but compliments and congratulations for the hard work you do and situations you have to do under. As parliamentarian, it's my job to be completely neutral and without comment. Um, you know, as far as who's right and who's wrong, and I won't go down that road. I've, uh, for a couple of months, I've done my best to divorce myself from Facebook. I find that it, uh, it really lowers my spirits and makes me a very nasty person sometimes. There are a couple of groups I belong to that are technical or, or actually have real purpose, so I stay with them. What I have seen several times for probably over the last two years is that when the official city means of communication, such as notices posted on boards, uh, city websites, printed agendas, differ from what says on social media, it causes an uproar. And I think this is the real danger of, of communicating on social media, because it is not the official means of communication. Anything there should not be taken as official. Only what comes from city hall directly should be taken as official communication. And I think if, uh, members of the council would be careful to watch what they host on Facebook to make sure that it does not differ or make a wrong idea. And if, uh, we could refrain from, uh, using an unofficial means of communication to disseminate what should be official, I think we will have a lot fewer problems. Gentlemen, ladies, please keep up the good work.
Stacy, the farmer's market, y'all know how I'm a telly getting up here, I hate drama even more. Um, and to reiterate that, let's just spend a lot less time on Facebook, you know? Come to the farmer's market, get outside, that kind of thing. Um, but to also clean out and agree with what Jane said here as a staff person, um, a lot of the drama is just getting in the way of day-to-day, you know, enjoyment of our town, obviously. Um, but also just the city business, um, over what I see as very small squabbles, understandings, large understandings, obviously. Um, and as Jane said, you know, I read this, I read this, I hear this person's experience, I hear this person's. I don't base anything, any opinion on another person's character off of anything but my own experience. I'm not going to listen to something as someone else's experience. So, you know, maybe somebody didn't have a great opinion of product or experience, but that is certainly not mine. He has been nothing but an encouragement to me, um, and, uh, that can't be nothing.
No.
Who's curious?
Like, no, I talk fast. But, uh, anyway, he has been a constant cheerleader, he's a supporter of the market, um, he's an encouragement to me. Just nothing but supportive, um, and again, to, to read, you know, and, and hear other people's side. I'm, I'm not discrediting those, I'm saying this is what my experience has been. I also happen to love Cameron, we've set some music jams together and, you know, I'm, I'm all for the let's get along ideas. Any of y'all know me, you know that. Um, but yes, I'd just love to see us move past this and, uh, continue on business as usual.
Thank you, Stacy. John? He has to go.
I'm gonna get over here. I've got a good break water now. Uh, good evening, all of you, thank you for what you do. Uh, we get a lot of thanks to police officers, but we get a shake at the end of two weeks, y'all don't, and y'all are a public servant, so thank each and every one of you. I've always had great pride in City Windsor. Uh, almost forty-eight years ago, I was born a few blocks away from here where the hospital used to be. Um, I've been a peace officer for over twenty-two years and, uh, worked with a lot of, of councils and, and everything. And I know that a lot of times there's a disconnect and it can be really tedious to get, uh, from the area administration down to the ranks. In two thousand seventeen, under the two of the chief Chester and city administrator Craig Lindholm, I was accepted into a, uh, program called Leadership Command College. Uh, it's a, it's a pretty prestigious deal, less than three percent of the peace officers in the state are accepted into the program. Uh, it's nine to twelve weeks. Uh, long as short of it, I, I hobnob basically with guys from Austin PD, San Antonio PD, Houston PD, Dallas PD, Irving PD, the sheriff's offices. And we are forced to do everything together. We stay together, we live together, we go to class together, it's working lunches, it's three weeks straight. First section to College Station, section, second is at Ben, last is at St. Houston. But one thing I've noticed through all of those is, one of the things that they continue to say is that, um, they complain about their city council and their city administrators and their city managers. And that's one thing that's, that's through all of them, and I'm talking about small departments to big. And each time I went, I've been able to say, I don't have that problem. What? And they look back at me, what, what, what do you mean? I said, I don't got that problem. Well, you're lucky. No, I'm not lucky. I, I tell them, we have an, an, an administrator and a council that's engaged and compassionate and astute to the needs of not only the police department, but each department within the city. And we do, by far, uh, more than those around here that I've even worked at. Um, and it's not luck, it's what happened when preparation meets opportunity. And that's what we've got here, uh, with all of them, each and every one of you. In two thousand sixteen, the council set out to find the best, most qualified individual to hire for the role of city administrator for the city of Windsor. And you did that, and you found him. Since that time, um, you know, I can't say I've agreed with everything that Craig has done or said, I can't. Um, but I can say that, uh, everything that he's been, that he's done has been for the advancement and the better of the city. Uh, the city, including its citizens and its employees. Uh, the decision to do this was reaffirmed earlier this year when y'all met with the seat two-on-one, and we reaffirmed it. You know, it's, it's, just as I started this off, I had great pride for the city of Windsor.
Time.
One more second. Let's not have a small number of naysayers, uh, continuing to interrupt all the positive that's been done and spreading misinformation and negativity. We're above this because we are Windsor.
Amen.
Thanks, Christopher.
John Nelson, nine-six-nine Wheeler Drive. I wanna say that I like, I give it one. I really do. I'm especially proud of Wendy, the name that I've heard you say and the unity you call it more. It's incredible and it blesses my heart. Joan, the, the comments that you've made in the past and stuff that you've done, the questions you've asked are fantastic. Cameron, I could tell you're nervous a lot from the beginning and you power through and you did great.
Even for a default mayor.
Even for a default mayor. Now, don't take necessarily that because you are, I mean, that doesn't mean that you're bad, a mayor. Brenda, you, uh, the way you conducted yourself when Cameron was gone was astounding and it was incredible. And I was amazed by it at the last meeting. Michael and Jim, both of you guys really get on my nerves, not to get mad. I think y'all do good, I think y'all do great, because I think you love the city. And, and I think, and I know Craig does. And I've watched him do what he does and I've heard him speak and I've watched him walk the town and I've, and I've, I've watched the man take a beating and I, and I've watched him stand strong for his love of the city. And he was right when he made the comments about baseball team. You are a coach, Mr. Mayor. You are the man sitting in the middle of the council that the people were elected. And I believe with all my heart, as a business owner and a, and a boss, that it is your responsibility to protect your team.
There you go.
To protect Jim, Michael, Brenda, Joan, Wendy, and Craig. And protect them with everything you've got, because if they're not here, where, where would you stand? We are only as good as the men and women that we surround ourselves with. And if we let the foxes spoil the vine and we let the enemy come in and tear our team down, then we will no longer stand and we will be no team. And Windsor has all this great stuff going on and all this stuff that people are looking at coming and investing in this town. And if they look at us and they see turmoil in the ranks, they're gonna move on, guys. And I know none of you want that. I know each and every one of you love this city, you love everything about it and you wanna see it move forward. And I know the people on Facebook wanna see it move forward, even though most of them join the witch hunt. But I'm proud to hear that you guys agreed to move past this and the call for unity, because God knows we need it. We can be a beacon of light shining out from East Texas for every other city to model themselves after us. If it's start, it's gotta start at the head, and the head is you. You. And I hope I didn't offend you, I apologize that I did. I didn't intend to.
Time.
I think you're a great man and I'm blessed to be here.
Why is he doing a tiny?
Are you kidding? Would she have, would she have a chance between these two?
I commend her.
She really has a lot to say.
John Frelzinger, nine-six-nine Wheeler. I'll tell you, I'll tell you guys something, you know, I battled back and forth ever since this thing started months ago. Whether or not I wanted to be involved, because I got other stuff to do. But I could not. Truth of the matter is that Cameron Wilcox is the Windsor default mayor.
What your term was defective.
No, I didn't mean anything like that. I said one word, and I said one word and it was default, because that's the truth. And it's not a negative, it's just true. And anybody who's been around me since all this started would, would tell you, if you ask him, that my words to them were that he's our mayor, default or not. And my hope is that he'll rise to that occasion and lead this team. And in case you can't do the simple math, the leaders of this community have come together to say Craig's one of ours. And when I will stand for him being attacked, any more than we stand for you being attacked, sir. He has earned the trust of all of the guys who work under his employ, all the way to the cops.
And the women too.
That's a big deal. Those guys are tough to please. And we want peace. Four months, three executive sessions to discuss the guy. Easy math, bro. Somebody's got to get him, I don't know if there's some kind of political promise made, some kind of political witch hunt made. I've seen all kinds of stuff that's out there and a lot of people are concerned that something like that is afoot, including myself. DA. I won't go there. But there's a lot more than just this meeting tonight concerning this issue. And these people wanna be heard because they're tired of it. They're done, we're done. Now, if Craig steps in it, I expect him to get it off his boot, just like I would. And if he does something that we need to string him up for, then by God, we'll string him up for it. But until he's done something, or you've done something, or any of us have done something, we're innocent. Until proven guilty and the fact that the executive sessions and the decisions and the, and the complaints and the articles and the garbage continue to roll about him and his poison, it's not gonna stop. Somebody's gonna have to be at the top, not just a lowly old tyrant who says, hey, one of our neighbors is being attacked and we're done with it. And I hope, Cameron, that might be you. If it ain't, then you guys stick to your guns and make a motion and do what you gotta do. Thank you.
Corporal William Clur, where Craig lives, I also live in the city. Too? The less that live here, huh? I know more than a cop, I'm a citizen here, alright? I wrote something, but I'm, I'm obsessed with this, man. Like, I, I, I battled wanting to talk, I battled keeping to myself, because I don't get political, okay? I'll come up here and tell y'all what I think, because Captain Hill, Chief Chester hired me to do a job and I'm doing it very. Every one of you is my friend. Every one of you I've had single conversations with outside of this place and had fun doing it, alright? I love what I do, I love life, period, okay? I love that guy. Lot of brother. Uh, I hated coming over here, I hated being around this political stuff, I didn't come over here when I started. Then he got hired, we were in his office, okay? I'm gonna try to read this. I have worked in the city of Windsor, as a fellow, since two thousand twelve. I've made simple friendships amongst I'm hearing those friendships throughout this room. I learned to treat everyone with respect and my personality is that to my friends with everyone. Also believe that this city is amazing, I've chosen to grow my family, live in this community. Members of this council, who may or may not, I believe I've earned each one of your friendships and respect. A vital reason I've chosen to raise my kids here is the leadership of Craig Lindholm. Craig Lindholm's vision and hunger for our community is beyond words. He works hand-in-hand with us daily to make sure that each employee is taken care of, has what they need, complete the tasks that are before them. I understand that change, that what change comes resistance, but progress is not something we look at as a negative. I trust this council to make accurate decisions based on what's right and believe that what's right is still a lot great to do is job and to do a fantastic job in leading this city to bigger and better things. I'm not an administrative, I'm not a department head, I'm simply a guy that works here. And it's proud to call all of you my friends. This council has been the best of our time. You will have progression of our city and you will have Windsor grow more than any group of forty. Right now, as a citizen of this community and employee of this city, I see this as an urgent time. I believe that now is the time to not allow this misinformation of social media on our town. Council must stand for what's right and stop the war on oppression. Craig Lindholm is one of the reasons I still work here and will be a reason I continue to work here as well as the faith that he has put in Chief Chester and Captain Hill. I've, I've had other opportunities and I've looked at other options, but nothing beats working for the right people, being where everyone is a team. I beg y'all, beg this council to do what's right and come together as a team to help back our leader. I couldn't be more proud to call Craig Lindholm the administrator and one of my best friends.
Thanks, Blake.
I'm Dana Carroll, I work at the police department. Like Blake, I debated Lily on speaking. Worked at the police department first in two thousand fifteen, and then I came to the city side and I worked for a year. And then I went back to the police department. I love both departments. I can speak to his character in that he's been known for professional and supportive. But the Facebook thing, we don't get on there, we don't comment, we don't have anything to add to it, but it is a representation of our community. There's like almost nine thousand people on that page. I think that we really need to watch how we're treating each other and not putting things out there on an idea without the facts to back up. So please, I'm not representing our town very. But thank you for the opportunity to give us a chance to speak, because you can get a chance to get a positive light on you. And you deserve it, you're really, really fair. I love working here and you've made it very important. And we've gone through the funnel, but I'm very excited for what we have in the future. I think you guys will all get us there.
I'm not gonna walk up there, I'm just gonna get to do something real quick because I didn't prepare anything. I just wanted to say that I love that man right there. I'm for him. He's the best man for this job. I gained a friend.
Your name, please?
I'm George Ry, Brown with the Winsboro Police Department. Turn him back over here.
Marilyn.
Look at him. Sure.
I hate speaking in public. It's not good to stay here too. I'm Lisa Mundy with the municipal court clerk here. I came today because I wanted to see as a team what was happening with our city administrator and why we were continuously seeing executive sessions being held. And what kind of guarantee we have when we come in that someone that we trust to work under is gonna be there. And if he's not there, who's going to be? When you have that executive session that did not take place, you weren't here after that meeting, so what exactly was the point? What would have took in both of your chairs while you were gone? So I think James had a very valid point that not only does Craig need some reassurance, we need reassurance on what we're walking into.
She's like, ugh.
Calling right around me, Chief Chester, I'm right one hundred percent with what Lisa just said. You did exactly that. You came in on a Sunday, decided, or a Saturday, decided to have the executive session left. If it had gone your way, you would have left us with no boss. We don't appreciate that and we'd like to know where we stand. Because if he leaves, I will probably leave.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, Honorable Craig Linholm. I'm happy to be here tonight because I get to say some word in support of this good man.
Name?
I'm John Milligan. Let's see. Live out on Highway thirty-four seventy. You can call Peckerwood Flats. Craig and I share the experience of having earned the same degrees in the same university. Master of Public Administration, North Texas State University, when I got on was U N T when he got in. You got a good deal when you hired this man. He's a leader, man of his word. You can trust him. Anybody that all these good cops trust is already good with me. The only difference in that is that I'm interactive with him and you can believe what he says. If he says he's gonna do it, he does. That's my field. Thank you.
Mike Power, eighty-five twenty-five, highway thirty-seven. I don't normally get up and do this, alright? I get up in front of a bunch of engineers and talk. But I've been called an outsider in this town by a few people that are in this room. I don't appreciate that. Also don't appreciate what's going on right now in the council. Okay, I've been involved in youth sports for thirty years. You know what I see going on? A bunch of parents where their kid doesn't get enough playtime, okay? If it wasn't for this man right here, we wouldn't have a brewery in this town, alright? When I first came to this town, the people I met were awesome. My wife and I would walk down the street, people would say hello. We chose Winsboro because of that. You know one of the first people that I met in this town? Craig Linholm. That man will do anything to get stuff done, okay? I hear everybody say that he's doing all this wrong. The Winsboro Watch Facebook group, the News Around Winsboro Facebook group. It's ridiculous. You have a handful of people stirring up problems. They don't know any of the facts. And I asked for facts and I get looted out. I'm sick of it. Y'all should come together. I see that there's trying to be some unity. But I'm upset that it seems like every time we turn around, somebody's trying to get rid of this guy. So I don't know. I don't know what's going on. I would like facts. I'm a data analysis kind of guy. I don't want to hear hearsay. I don't want somebody posting up some pictures, some stupid signatures on whatever. I don't care. What I want are facts. If a man's done something wrong, then let's work on that. If he's done nothing wrong, then let's move on, okay? We don't look like crap outside of this town. I get people talking to me from gallus. What is going on up there? I don't know. I'm just trying to run a brewery, alright? I mean, can't we all just move along? The guy's done great, as far as I can see so far. So if somebody has some factual evidence in this room right now that he's done something wrong somewhere, let's get it out in the open. And if there's not, let's go and do our business.
Amen.
We all have jobs to do. We all have, you know, family to take care of. It's just, it really is ridiculous and we need to move on. We're all adults, okay? Let's act like adults. Let's move on and like Wendy said, unity. Let's foster unity and let's all do that. And I'm fully on board with Michael James here about giving a vote of confidence and a vote of faith.
Absolutely.
Quite honestly, Mr. Mayor, I think you should entertain that as well.
Agreed. Good job.
Skip Parker. Hey, I'm not real up on the politics and the Facebook and all that. Anytime I hear that, it's, you know, there's three versions, this side, that side of truth. So I'm just gonna speak to my experience. My personal experience with Craig has been astronomical. It's been great for me and my family. He's really helped not with just my growth at work, but also on a personal level. And I just want to say very thankful for that. Everything else is just being reiterated and crafted. I don't know anything about it because I don't keep up with a lot of that, but I'm glad that y'all came together and that's all I got. Thanks. Keep it short.
Todd Perry, I'm a maintenance supervisor for the city. I'm gonna make this real quick because to be honest with y'all, I got a real heavy heart tonight. Last few days I was thinking about if I was gonna come in here and what I was gonna say and how I was gonna say it. It's all scrap. I just spent an hour before I got here talking with my dad. Me and my dad had had a terrible relationship for a whole lot. He lived with people, I mean, the guest house, and my brother. And he's done. And now I find out just recently that it's probably gonna be a lot quicker than I thought. Since I've been working here for the city, I have experienced so many personal losses. I myself nearly died. I come to work every day for months wearing colostomy bags. My daughter's got type one diabetes. The health problems and the personal things that have affected my life have just come to a head in these last four years since I've been for this city. And all I can say right now, in light of everything that's been said tonight, is I've never in my life, in my whole working life, had so much support and so much care and shown to me by a group of people that I've had since I've been here in Winsboro. So I just want to say I love you all and thank you all for helping me through hard times.
Jared's gonna go top.
Guess I'll stand up and give my two cents. My name's Jared Elmore, maintenance worker, and before I became an employee here, I worked for two and a half years for the city of Mount Hur. The worst two and a half years I ever spent in my entire life. I mean, it was... I went to city council meetings and watched fistfights break out because of the turmoil. I had to deal with the city manager that she didn't know, she didn't know the difference between the maintenance department and the water department. She didn't know. It was always, well, why don't you go ask this person? Why don't you go ask this person? Since my year being employed here, I've been right there to help me out more than anything else. Anytime I go to him with a question, he'll be right there with an answer. Whether it's, sometimes takes a little bit longer than others, but he's always there. I can always count on him to be there when I need someone to talk to. Or just, you know, whether it's personal stuff or you should sit down and have a talk. I know no matter what happens, when I walk in the city hall, he's right there with a smile on his face that I can shake his hand without crying. That's all I got to say.
Here you go, Ashley, forty-five forty-one, East of F B one eight fifty-two, Winsboro, Texas. Not sure where to start. A lot of you know what's in those documents here and it certainly wasn't community building from that perspective. As a builder, I've known for a long time that a lot of times you have to tear something down before you can put it back together constructively. What I saw tonight changed my opinion of a lot of that and I've expressed an apology, how much I appreciate what you do and how much you are underappreciated where you sit. Joan, I apologize to you for having to be brutally approached by the last time in the process of things. But when things are not right, that's my first action, those last actions. Be thankful you weren't here because I would've come after you right behind her. But in the process of things, that's the first step. My wife asked me, why did I come here angry last night in the process? She made me promise to put a pound of podium there, so I hope I'm not. But in the course of things, my mother, my mother is brokenhearted because of Winsboro. Because a hundred and seventy-five plus year heritage of building homes, building communities, building towns, and building a better state of Texas, I brought down here to call my home. And when I did, this man impressed me so much that I decided to come out of semi-retirement and start working again for the better of this city. And that is my goal, I know. And I did not feel good. I did not like what I did last time in the course of things. I did not look forward to doing what I had to do tonight. I have not, I seem to change hard on the podium. Wendy, I apologize. I don't know you personally, but you're on my list to call and get to know in the course of things because I am about unity. And I say all that just to repeat what my dad, after twenty-five years of public service, gave to me and says, live your life as one. And it reads, "I watched him tearing a building down. A gang of men in a busy town with a ho-hee-ho and lusty yell, they swung a beam and a sidewall fell. I asked a woman, are these men skilled as the men you'd hire if you had to build? He gave me a laugh and said, no, indeed. They're just common labor is all I need. I can easily reckon a day or two what builders have taken years to do." And I thought to myself as I went my way, which of these two roles have I tried to play? I am a builder who works with care, measuring life by ruling squares. I am shaving my deeds by a well-made plan, patiently doing the best I can. Or am I a wrecker who walks a town content with the labor tearing down?"
Time.
I'm gonna make a video of this. After the building of towns and cities, and I was delighted and proud to bring here and bring projects that I think have built pride to this entire city. And I continue with that commitment to do so. And I hope that after the dust settles and what has occurred here, that we can find a way to join together and unify a vision, as you said up there. A vision to make Winsboro not great again because it's already great. But to join together and build together, to remake Winsboro the absolute best it can be. That is where I come from. That's what I'm made of and that's all I know. And everything I do is pointed around that direction. And I repeat another man, quoting Peter Pettus, "In a turning and resonant, what we do in life echoes in eternity."
Craig, just want to say thank you. By the way, my name is Brendan Bassam. I just want to say thank you for being a great leader and not backing down to the naysayers who were so against you and wanted to have your job. You do a great job of leading all of us and it shows with my captain, it shows with my chief, it shows with that guy over there, Blake. It also shows over there, Ryan, and even on the way, the dispatch over there too, because he's waving me down. So I just want to say thank you. It means a whole lot.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to continue to ask once again. And I'm asking you as the mayor, and as far as I know, so far, we're still friends. And that hasn't changed yet.
That's not.
And this is that I would, I think it would be very important for us to put everything aside and that we give Craig the vote of confidence, that we agree together, that we will allow him to finish what we've hired him to do. And as your words were to me, when you saw him, as soon as you walked in the door, you said, that's the man. And you and I both saw that. And that's part of the reason he's here today. And I would like us to give him that vote and go on. Let's put things behind us. Let's look forward. Let's put any kind of hurts there may be, you know, if I've hurt you or anybody else that's here. You know, I apologize. My responsibility first here as a servant. A man can never lead if he can't be a servant. My dad taught me that. And I have been a servant far more in my life than I've been a leader. And I believe that it would go a long, long way to everything that's going on, everything out there, if we would all agree together to do that, to give that vote of confidence. And short of this man doing something illegal and something we need to, you know, and I'm with John out here, if he does, we nail his butt to the wall and to put it in real, you know, terms. But if not, let's let him do his job. Because he's a man that can get it done with us working with him and directing the path and what we are wanting to do in our city. And then he knows how to make those things happen more than we do. And I would ask that we could do that tonight as a beginning of, to continue on with what you guys had your conversation with and all, and let's go forward and let's put this thing on.
Can I second that?
I'll second.
Yeah, that. It doesn't matter.
I guess there's a motion and a second.
Well, I make a motion. That's my motion is still there. So I would make the motion that we would do that. That we would, I make the motion that we would give a vote of confidence to the mayor.
This isn't a...
To the city administrator. It's not an order. I'm just saying as our words.
I don't know how to work that. I think, can I say, just, I think everybody just wants to hear each one of you say something.
And carry on is the point.
Yes, that is exact.
He just wants us to show a prayer that we were behind it.
He's having a talk.
I think we make them admit them without taking a vote.
I want us to take a vote.
Yes.
That's what I'm...
I think that's important.
I think we want to hear a vote.
Yeah, we just want to hear you guys say it, man.
Tom Ricker.
That's the motion.
Okay, that was...
There's a motion.
Yeah.
And I second it. There's a seconded.
I'm not sure what the motion was because it was pretty...
The motion was is that we give a vote of confidence as a council, as a council. And I mean, of course, in this time, you wouldn't have to. But still, you know, I want you to know that we're asking you in your heart and mind that you do this as well. That we are committed to this and not committed to bringing him down or whatever, but that he's, he can do his job within his job description. And that we give him that vote of confidence as a council to do that. And that, you know, the unnecessary amounts of time that we, you know, I don't want to have to give him a vote of confidence every, every month. There's no need for that unless he's... There's no need for that, unless he's done something wrong. There is no need.
Can I make a comment to that? I was on the hiring committee when we hired Craig. Like when we were too.
I was.
And Craig definitely was the top candidate for this position. And came in running and hitting the ground running and taking the leadership that we wanted to see and that we're thankful for. And I appreciate that. I'm talking to you, Craig, and I'm talking to the audience, but we have had our differences. And we've had a meeting, I think, and we met with a friend of mine about trust and respect. You and I both know that that's a very high important thing in both of our lives and in our relationship. And if that trust gets broken, then that, that is a cause for not being able to work together, although we agree to disagree on many issues, as does the rest of the council with me. And that's good. My reason for being here is to serve the people of this community, the ones that are here, the ones that are not here. And I take that very seriously. And if I hear a concern from a citizen that comes to me with concern, I am going to address it. I am going to find out all the facts and maybe take action and maybe take the position that we need to just talk this out with constituents and get them to understand whatever the issue is. You know, they could be wrong, they could be right, they could be supposition, they could be listening to Facebook with all the gossip and all that goes on that is inappropriate and incorrect. I don't, I think that we are all individuals. And I don't feel comfortable with saying hi to a motion where you're asking everybody here to give a vote of confidence. I think that should be a bad individual basis. And either one would sit down with Craig again to work on a better relationship with him. And to do that for the betterment of this city and all of the citizens in it. There are concerns that I have. And perhaps the best thing for me to do is to get all the facts and sit down with Craig and discuss them. And in that way, I will give my support as an individual to make that commitment to Craig. I think that the comments that we make here today about his character are spot on. I believe that he has been good for our city. Some of the things that he is proposing for our city are not going to be liked by everybody. But the main reason that we all sit in these seats including Craig are to do what's best for the city and for the citizens of this city. And as a council member, that's my responsibility, and I make that commitment.
Well.
Excellent.
And I would like to go on to record that I just wanted resolved that we reaffirm our trust in our belief in what our city administrator can do. If there's individual needs that we need to work out with him, that's okay, that's fine. But we reaffirm him as a, as our city administrator is, and I'll just go on public for that. And would like to ask, you know, that others on this council would either reaffirm it or say no. Or like Joan said, there may be something that she's got questions for, if she wants to work that out. That's perfectly okay, that's perfectly fine. But we can't keep going the way, it's not going to work, and it's not a stop. We as leaders of this town have to say enough is enough. And we cannot continue to listen to a very small amount of uninformed individuals. Thank you.
Amen.
Amen. Yes, we did.
We need a vote.
We have the motion.
Mike, you can say.
We're just affirming our complete support, Craig, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
So that motion is?
The motion is, we're affirming him.
Make sure exactly what I'm voting on.
We're affirming him as a council that we, that we support him fully in him completing his job that he's been asked to do and that we are affirming that, that's what we do.
There's a motion, it's been seconded. Enter table.
Aye.
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 And you? What about our mayor?
I'm not required to vote, I'm not.
This is not a voting. That's not what that was intended for.
I would give a vote.
Yeah, thank you, John.
I voted yesterday when I met with the man, and I told him that I would continue to start working, or I would start working with him. And I, that's it. Well, you said we would move four from the past, so how would you vote tonight? We'll take it.
Take it or not.
But tonight. You can take it or you can vote. Wow. Motion carries.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's not exactly.
I'm six point nine.
Six point nine provided this council last month. This is consideration of appointment of representatives of Wood County Crazel District Board of Directors for 2020. Each year, Wood County President District seeks nominees for consideration for appointment, which the appointment is actually made by the existing board of the Crazel District. They contact all the taxing agencies to see if they have anybody that they would like to nominate to be considered on a ballot to serve on the district. This can be an elected official, it doesn't necessarily need to be. I thought this could be last month for consideration. You can take no action on it, you can make a nomination. That would be submitted to the Crazel District as it be placed on a ballot or you can have.
Have you ever had anybody get this spot? I mean, it's, it sounds like.
Well, no one has ever been nominated since I've been, no one has ever been nominated to be considered on ballot.
No one has contacted me that they want to be on that.
Is anybody in here?
Leanne Sparks wanted to like that job.
We need somebody.
Leanne Sparks said today she would like that job.
Where is she?
Get your nomination, all right?
I'll do it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we nominate Leanne Sparks and Chana Gell Willis to serve on the Wood County Crazel District Board of Directors for 2020, 2021.
I have a motion.
It's the board that makes the final decision as to whether.
I have a nomination, motion for nomination. Do I have a second? I have a second.
May I make a comment for a special?
I'll entertain, I'll entertain a vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. What was your vote? Three ayes, two boys nay. Nay, motion carries. Set report.
Did he stat have an oral report? Joey, do you have an oral?
Yes, you do, you have an explanation to give, please.
No, Joey.
Well, she says she had a report.
I guess she referred to the change on some sewer charges off of the man. Okay, and that was brought before by previous council and administration. And that never came through my department, I didn't know anything about it until customers questioned me about it. But anyway, we had some, the plants across the city over the years since that got passed. And all we could do is turn it back to that. And that was a charge on the sewer demand charge for having a sewer running in the ground. And once you get a water demand charge. And so I met with Craig and we discussed a few things about trying to get that in more line with surrounding cities where it wasn't so much. And so we worked that out and we come up with a figure and that's one of the present.
That doesn't cause an undue burden, right? It's very high for.
So these fees are, and rates are lower than what they currently are?
For the bigger industrial sites, yeah. Your nursing homes, your hospitals, things that require six-inch taps or bigger sewer taps. It's only affecting the sewer charge and on the demand side of it.
On the document that we have on our agenda, it does not show what the current fees are.
That is the current. It was lower, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the old one in there. This is lower than what it was. I believe the old ones were like four, five, eight.
It was six.
Six hundred and something.
So is that true across the board, that they are lower?
It's from these two tubs.
It's just.
Correct.
Yes.
The water and sewer, the four.
No, just sewer.
The four inch and the six inch, correct.
Yes. And we had developers, you know, and they would call me out, asking me to explain this to them. And why is it when they have multiple units in various cities across the south, all over Texas, why is the city of Winsboro so much higher than everybody else's? Why is that, and that may come spread over. We sit down and met with them and discussed it, and they choose not to build here.
Chris.
That comes into effect.
It's not going to matter if you turn it down, it's run.
We did adjust that from previous administration.
This came into existence, the higher charge, you charge for your water, you also never even know that, basically. You get charged for your water and you get charged for your sewer. And the larger consumers, Madison Oaks, hospital, nursing home, whatever, multiple units either on one meter were paying really an exorbitant amount comparable to other cities. And this was done, I think, back, I don't know, seven, eight, nine years ago when the city was having financial issues. And they thought that this was a way that they could generate more income. But what it's done is that it delays development for high-volume customers. People don't want to come here because not only are they paying a $600 a month water bill, they're paying a $600 or $700 a month sewer bill.
They're still paying, they're still paying their sewer charges for the amount of water sent to the wastewater. It was a demand charge that was getting paid on the sewer that was extreme. To have that sewer tap.
To have the large size sewer.
To have that size sewer tap in the ground, they were getting a demand charge on it like you would a new.
What item number is this?
Seven point one.
This is under, this is set point one, quarterly fee schedule update.
Any questions? Council, any questions?
You're asking for a motion.
No, it's just a report. No questions from the council. I am moving on, moving forward. Item number on eight, item number eight point one, executive session. I made a statement early on in the meeting where I would ask for this to be, item to be removed. I made that.
I'm sorry, I do have one thing back on discussion boards. Could we have an update on the code enforcement protocols as to the status report on the houses and the lots that aren't identified for demolition and any other properties that should be identified as something?
I made note to the two councils during our workshop that I would ask for item eight point one to be removed from our agenda.
One more. According to the city attorney, once an item is placed on the agenda and posted seventy-two hours ahead of the meeting, it can't be removed. You have to go ahead and go into the session.
Right of order. I did talk with the attorney this afternoon and to clarify and get finally, a final answer on this. If an item is placed on the agenda and it's seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting, the mayor or the council cannot, or the board cannot pull that item from the agenda until the meeting. And at the meeting, that item can be pulled.
Right, the option.
But you cannot pull it, you cannot put on Facebook, you know, the item is being pulled. And I understand the reason why we want to notify the public, is so that you don't waste your time being here if the item is going to be pulled. But the legal opinion today of Stan Lowery is that the item remains on the agenda until the meeting, and at the meeting, it can't be pulled.
You have the option to consider it or table it.
And in the future, there will not be any Facebook posts saying an item is being removed.
Amen.
Because that violates the decorum policy anyway, making a promise that can't be delivered on.
City council reserves the right to adjourn into closed session for any item posted on this agenda, provided.
provided that the closed session on one or more agenda item falls within one or more of the allowed sections of chapter five five one of the Texas government code.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this item, eight point one, be removed, be pulled from the agenda.
I have a motion. You have a second. I'll entertain a vote. A two.
Aye.
Five.
Aye.
It nays or not, motion passes. Postpone, or not postpone, but to remove, to remove item from the agenda. Questions from the media?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I was asked to be here tonight. I thought I had friends who asked me here tonight, I have to say heck of a day. Oh. Let me introduce myself, I'm Chuck Roy. I'm chairman of the board and chief operating officer of Verity Ventures. We're an Austin-based corporation of nine different companies in four states with assets totaling $126 million. We're best known here locally. I'm the editor of the two publications, the Fencepost Magazine and the Community Chronicle. The Chronicles serve six counties. We distribute to thirty-one cities through two hundred and sixty distribution sites. We currently enjoy some thirty-seven hundred subscribers in nineteen states and three foreign countries. What we do will be write about the good things of our communities. When I sat down here this morning, this afternoon, or three hours ago, I thought I was going to talk about all the good things we got to do. Had I listened to the Velikos commentary, I wasn't so sure that my message would be accurate. But now, three and a half hours later, I am here at exactly the right time. Because my message today is congratulate you. You do a great job. Because of our corporation, we have a hundred and sixty-six employees in the state of Texas. Throughout our area, not just the areas that we serve, our news media, but also other areas of the great state of Texas. I have addressed many city councils, I've missed, I've addressed our Congress, our Senate in the halls of Austin. And we talk about the uniqueness of our communities. You are unique. You have the same problems that everybody has. People of great passion, of vision, trying to do the very best they can with the resources, assets and talents that they have. I stand for you tonight to tell you that our corporation, in particular with our Fencepost Magazine and the Community Chronicle, will pledge our support to the Winsboro Center for the Arts. People such as Mary White, and I'm using that as an adjective, not a noun. Everybody here has probably been there and know the great things that are coming about with the new, potential new center. Certainly the congratulations of opening a brand new museum, that's wonderful kind of stuff. And it'll be on front page of our next publication, which will be out next week. One of the comments that I want to certainly make tonight, and I'm going to go completely off script with this. Leadership. Leadership means listening. And that's what y'all did tonight. So y'all truly are special. Y'all deserve all the accolades to be able to address your issues and resolve those issues and to move forward with the challenges that you face. My comment to you is that my message is not without salient and succinct comments. We, as a corporation, have pledged an annual contribution of $10,000 to help support what the Winsboro Center for the Arts and the entire initiative that you're doing here. We've had, I've been here for eight years. I come here, and I probably should have said this first, but it probably would have discounted my commentary. I'm an LSU graduate, which by definition means I'm not that smart. But I do hold master's degrees from the University of California at Berkeley, as well as the University of Texas at Austin. This is where we choose to live. I moved here after twenty-five years of Dallas. I was exiled to Washington DC for ten years. But I moved back here to Lake Fork area for the quality of life, for the enjoyment of Lake Fork, and for what Winsboro in particular is doing. So you're not unique, but you are unique. And I continue to support your uniqueness. And if there's ever anything that we can do as a corporation or as a media that covers twenty-nine counties with our magazine and six counties with our newspaper, I will give you my business card, call upon me anytime. Congratulations. We appreciate you more than you know. And I speak for a community of half a million people. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Chuck.
All right. The next regular city council meeting will be held on the second Tuesday of November at 5:30 PM. Anyone who wants to present business on the council, to the council at that meeting must submit a completed request to be placed on the agenda to the city hall by 12:00 PM on Monday, eight days prior to the meeting. It is eight, I adjourn the meeting at 8:14.